Let's call out sales again.
So, Madam Clerk, would you call the role?
Good afternoon. Mr. Burden?
President.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
President.
Here.
Mr. Davis?
Here. Mayor Benjamin?
I'm going to ask Mr. Duval if he would do our invocation for us.
Thank you, sir. Let us pray. Father God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this group assembled to do the work of this city, give us the discernment to make right decisions for all of the people in this Midlands area, and keep us safe in this weather and in our travels before we ask in your name, amen.
Amen. Amen. I'm going to ask our city manager.
Sir?
Do what you do.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim McDowell. We are going to reorder just a little bit and shift item two as our first item, Mr. McDowell, for the mayor to hopefully get here in time to hear the majority of the community development discussion. So, our first item will be the National League of Cities update, the Honorable Tamika Isaac-Duvan.
Thank you. And I wanted to just brief you guys. You know, it occurred to me when I attended my first board meeting online that there's a lot of information that gets pushed out through NLC. We don't always get it at the city level. So, I want to start briefing you guys, not all the time, but probably at least twice a year, maybe quarterly, on the information that we get. But we do have the Congressional Cities Conference coming up in two weeks. Mr. Davis, are you going? He doesn't know.
I don't.
Okay, well.
I checked his money for his teeth.
I will be there, but I'm not sure if anyone else is going. But one of the things.
Is this our trip?
No, this is.
When is our trip? It's next month, too, isn't it?
Did we said it?
That's what I was.
We did said it. I do have some dates to share with you because dates have been kind of.
Yeah.
But I'll send them out to y'all with some proposed dates.
Sorry.
So, this, yeah, this is the actual, the Congressional Cities Conference. So, this, the conference as well as Legislative Day. Typically, our city has always gone on our second or separate from everyone else to have our legislative meetings. So, I will be participating in the legislative meetings of the board while we're there. I think we do have currently set up a meeting with the Vice President as well as a couple congressional leaders. But, but the big thing I want to talk about is, and we've got it on our agenda, I will not be at the afternoon meeting, but it is on here for you guys' approval as a, as a resolution. I think number thirty-one?
Forty-one.
Forty-one, okay. So, forty-one, I'll be asking you guys to consider and consider supporting this resolution. National League of Cities, since this is a presidential year, surprise, surprise. National League of Cities, regardless of who the president is after November of 2020, want to continue to have a good working relationship. And we certainly want to make sure that our priorities as cities are elevated. So, the resolution that will be on your agenda tonight is asking for cities. Several cities have already done, passed resolutions asking all the presidential candidates on both sides to support the Leading Together Cities Agenda for 2020. And I just want to tell y'all what, what the agenda is, is supporting building sustainable infrastructure, creating a skilled workforce, ending housing instability and homelessness, and reducing gun violence. So, those are the five priorities that were voted on in November by the body of National League of Cities. So, they have presented a resolution. They are asked all the presidential candidates on all sides to support. Two candidates so far have supported. That was Mayor Pete Buttigieg and Senator Elizabeth Warren. They, I think the meeting with the Vice President will be asking that the Trump administration also support this agenda. And I'll let you guys know who else continues to support it. But the agenda, the resolution on there tonight, I'm just asking if we would support that. And then what we'll do is we'll send that to NLC, and they'll list us with the list of cities that have asked the presidential candidates.
Yeah, I was going to ask.
Is it annual thing? The agenda?
Every quarter annual.
The resolution we're adopting.
The, no, the resolution is actually just asking that every person currently running for president for election or reelection would support these five priorities that are priorities of the cities.
It is intentional, though, for the National League of Cities to have a resolution like this on particular issues.
Yeah. Yeah, we have resolutions all the time. I don't think they always push it out to the cities. But like I said, I'm, I'm learning a lot more now. So, I think there will be a lot more that they probably would want us to support. And I'll make sure I bring those forward to us to consider, to support it. But this one is actually just asking that, and I'll, I'll send you guys, and I'll leave this one copy I have here. I'll send you guys. But basically, like, under partner, Building Sustainable Infrastructure, "We're asking the president to partner with local governments to rebuild and fully fund the nation's transportation network, better connect our regions, and innovate with technology and sustainable solutions, provide grants, tools, and resources to support local efforts to strengthen infrastructure and make communities safer, more resilient in the face of extreme weather, weather events, and make the necessary investments to ensure that reliable, affordable broadband service is available to all Americans, including those in small and rural communities, while eliminating hurdles to local innovation." So, they're, they're all more conceptual. They're not specific policies, but it's basically asking whoever the administration that comes in in 2021 is or stays in in 2021 to support local efforts by providing funding and, and support for what we do.
So, this is not the first.
No, they're, they do it every election year.
Quadrennial support?
Yeah.
For presidential.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Tamika, do you know what they, they requested last time and what the follow-up was? Do people follow through on those initiatives or?
For the 2016 candidates? They did do it. I don't know the follow-up, so I can find that out. Mm-hmm. I know on this one, what they've asked every candidate to do, not just to say, oh, yeah, I'll do it, but actually to, to do a video. And so, NLC will continue to put the videos out there. So, that's why, how I know only two have done it so far because they have videos on the website, but they're asking them to basically commit to this agenda.
I think it's wonderful. It's a wonderful point.
Right.
Right. Can we get this information?
I'll make sure that we get a copy of this. And y'all have this here, but the resolution will be on your agenda for tomorrow.
Sounds good.
And that's my update. And just like I said, I, I hope maybe no more than quarterly, but as I get information. Oh, and I, I was appointed to the Finance Committee. Yay, me.
Congratulations.
So, so my first meeting, Finance Committee meeting, will be next Saturday. But as I get information from the board level, I'll, I'll try and compile it so I'm not coming piecemeal. But I'm thinking maybe at most quarterly, but probably maybe just twice a year right before each convention, each conference, to let you guys know what's going on at NLC and, and what we as city leaders need to know about their priorities and what they're asking us to do.
Thank you. Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you. Why don't we, I know everybody's schedule is tenuous, but every now and then, I would suggest that you go to one a year if not.
Well, that, that's a great point. I forgot to bring that up. I, and I mentioned this to Councilman Rickman, I would love for all of us to consider going in November. So, the November conference is in Tampa, and Kathy Manus, our colleague from across the river, is going to be installed as the president of National League of Cities. And this will be the first time that South Carolina has had a president of NLC. So, I think it's huge, and it would be great for, you know, for her to get as many South Carolina elected officials to, to come and support her. So, I'll make sure that Shanique gets to date to everybody. We already have the dates, but it'll be in Tampa. And that's, that's driving distance, so it shouldn't be cost prohibitive to go.
We'll hop in Ed's car.
Oh, absolutely. That's what you do.
And really, to that point, I mean, you think about it, it probably, you know, really started with Steve, but, you know, I, I thought about that this weekend. I don't know if anybody realized, and it'd be great for local media to actually look at that, but we had Steve, President of, of U.S. Conference of Mayors. This current year, Beth Branham from Lexington County as well is president of the National School Boards Association. That's the first time we've ever had a South Carolina president in SBA as well. And then, and then Kathy will be coming at NLC. So, Steve was the second South Carolina president of U.S. Conference of Mayors, but Beth and Kathy are first time South Carolina has been represented as the national president of those bodies. So, I just think that, that says a whole lot to our, our local elected leadership.
So, thank you, Mr. Davis. Okay, we will move into our main discussion item for today, which is the Community Development Block Grant Mitigation Program Overview of the Process and the Plan. Ms. Sue, am I pronouncing your last name correctly? Southan? Ms. Sue Southan, Program Consultant for ICF, and Ms. Gloria Said, Director of Community Development, will present today and again during the regular meeting for the public benefit as well.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Mayor Pro Tim McDowell, members of City Council, we're excited to come before you today to give you an update on the CDBG mitigation grant that the city has been allocated. Knowing that time is of essence, I'm not going to be long-winded. I'm going to turn it right over to Ms. Sue so that she can go through the presentation and update you.
And I'm not going to be long-winded either, I promise. A new advance? Okay. Just very briefly, this is the first time the HUD has ever provided this kind of funding?
So, you need to use your speaker.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, sir.
This kind of funding for communities. It's forward-thinking. Instead of fixing what happened as a result of natural disaster, this is to help communities become proactive in being able to identify ways that they can reduce their risks and make their communities more resilient to future disasters. So, the, so the City of Columbia has been given eighteen, a little bit over eighteen point five million. This is, again, an idea of what that mitigation means. From the HUD standpoint, this is what they're looking for. Things that will, projects and activities that you will engage in that will lessen the impact of future disasters on the residents of your communities. What they have asked is that also we take a look at the hazard mitigation planning that's done through FEMA funding at the state and, in this instance, the regional level through the Central Midlands COG, and make sure that we are addressing the seven community lifelines and projects that may have been identified in those hazard mitigation plans that were unable to be funded due to shortage of funding, and that that's kind of the starting point for all this. So, that's what we have been doing, certainly with the, your staff has done a phenomenal job, I just want to say in advance, because with a number of the MIT grantees we're working with, they have no idea what they want to do or how they want to do it. To their credit, the City of Columbia staff has done a lot of advanced thinking in this regard, which is really helpful because the timeline on this is short. One of the things that has to happen that's different from other block grant programs with which you may be familiar is that we are required to do a mitigation needs assessment in advance of presenting the plan. And this involves looking at a whole variety of research, scientific data on impacts of storms, on prioritizing which of a number of, I think there are fifteen altogether, significant kinds of events are likely to impact your community, the frequency with which they impact, the impact that they have in terms of dollar value and, and loss of human life and, and human suffering. And we, those get prioritized. And I think, I believe what we're thinking about here are flooding, thunderstorms, tornadoes, lightning, there's at least one other, there's fifteen altogether. And this, this you'll see in the, our hazard mitigation plan, but that is in process at this point. Go ahead. Based on the hazards that the staff is already acutely aware of because of the experiences you've had in the past, they started by identifying potential projects that they would like to see considered for funding in this. And the two major infrastructure projects are the Canal Headgates and the Lockgate Repair and the replacement of the Olympia Two Fire Station. We also are, there is also some money in planning, which will be used for a whole variety of different things, again, to help the community become more resilient. Potentially, in the future, some of that money may, may be diverted into other projects as they're identified. And then the oversight and monitoring for administration, holding on to the five percent that HUD, which is the maximum that HUD allows for, for the grantees. So, the Olympia Fire Station is the first project.
One question.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, how long was the oversight?
This is a project, the fifty percent of the projects must be completed within six years and the balance within twelve. So, we're looking at twelve years' worth of administration oversight responsibility on the part of the city. Are there, please, I apologize. Please stop me if you have any questions. Did that?
Yeah.
Okay. This is the Olympia Fire Station currently. This is the project area that it serves. We have already done an analysis of the census tracts within the service area, and this service area is slightly over sixty-five percent low and moderate income. Go to the next one. And when we looked at the project in light of the, those seven community lifelines that we talked about. These are the reasons, these are the reasons why this project has a high priority on the part of the staff. So, we, we know it serves a low-income area. It's going to provide a new and resilient facility. The current facility is, as you know, is a repurposed greenhouse. And really, it can't be modified or retrofitted to bring it up to the kinds of standards that most of your other fire stations are currently at. It's going to have additional capacity for emergency response. It will also accommodate the ladder or aerial trucks, which the fire station, your fire personnel set are going to be critical, as this is a relatively high-growth area, and the growth is occurring in multi-story facilities, which are now a bit of a struggle to service with the existing rolling stock that's available in that station. And then we're also obviously going to have backup generation so that it will continue to be in service throughout whatever the, the natural disaster might be. Of course.
And it may be a little presumptuous at this point. What about fire, is fire equipment involved in the restructuring of this, this new fire station?
Like fire, like rolling stock or other kinds of equipment?
So, anything needed to outfit this station as far as the equipment that goes inside the station is included? The trucks are not included right now, but we're, the trucks are not included, but we'll use the trucks currently that are stationed, engine, or stationed to. We may end up adding a ladder truck if the funds will allow that, once we get farther into the project.
Are you referencing, like, turnout gear, Robert McDowell? Turnout gear, like the, the gear for the firefighters?
That's what, that's what I'm alluding to. What about the gear?
It, it is not included at this point. This is just the station and anything needed for the station.
So, that becomes an additional expense?
Well, the station's already, I mean, it's in place, and we have firefighters there. So, whatever equipment they're using now, they'll use when we have a new station.
And I guess the reason I, the reason I raise that is that evacuators for uniforms and after firefighters have left the scene and gone, come back to the station.
Come up that second.
This new station does include all of that new, modern equipment that you hear our fire department talking about.
So, we can get any, okay, good.
And are those things eligible, too, I guess, is what?
The retrofitting should be, yes.
And Missy, we have purchased fire engines in the past through this, this grant, correct?
Yes. Fire engines are an allowable cost.
Okay.
The city has never used CDBG, but the county recently used their DR funds. But we are, again, we, if we can get a ladder truck out of this amount of money, we will. We need to get farther in the design before we'll know that.
Well, the re, and I, and I hate to be pushing this issue because, because of the carcinogens that are part of that fire, firefighters' uniform outfit after a fire poses some real concerns for me and, of course, for firefighters. So, what I'm hearing is that in this building, there will perhaps be an evacuator to clean those things?
Yes, sir. So, all of the modern equipment you have heard Chief Jenkins and his staff talk about needing is incorporated in a new station.
So, they, so for both this project and the next one that you'll hear about, the Canal Headgates, the staff has been intimately involved with Gloria, Sue, and Missy as far as presenting what they need. You know, Chief Jenkins is going to give his wish list now. So, rest assured, he has put in there any and everything, and we may have to dial it back a little bit because we want to stay, obviously, within budget, Councilman. But we're going to try to, this is the reason why we have this approach with two exceptional projects, that we feel like we can maximize the amount of funding availability that we have versus trying to spread ourselves thin with a myriad of projects. There are lots of good projects, but these really have risen to the top. And we feel like we can, you know, we've got to consider property acquisition, obviously, for the station. We hope that the county will maybe come to the table and participate, but we're not going into it assuming there'll be other participation. We really want to, you know, for Columbia to take the lead and get this done finally.
Questions on the fire station?
And the other project is the Columbia Canal Headgates Project. If you want to go to the next, that map illustrates the service area for that, which is also low, moderate income. So, this is, both of these projects will provide a hundred percent low, moderate income benefit. And this one is just critical to being able to provide potable drinking water and fire protection throughout the community. I, I'm, I'm sure that all of you know way more about the current situation and what's happened as a result of the, the issues with the floodgates than I. But I think it's, it certainly is a project that makes a lot of sense and is, will be a real benefit to a very large group of constituents within your community and in the, in the neighboring county as well.
Can we not use the balance of the money towards the alternative water source or towards the hydro plant that would generate power for our use?
Thank you, Councilman. So, the, the, the status of the hydro and the, the actual embankment repair, we're presently conducting an environmental assessment that FEMA is leading to move forward with that project. And we expect that between FEMA funds and state funding, that that, the hydro repair and the canal embankment will be fully funded.
Planning in this, would that go towards then our alternative source of drawing water so that we're not just stuck with the headgates as well?
Yes, sir. So, the headgates are a critical component of that, as you know, of all that system working together. So, using the CDBG mitigation dollars to replace headgates takes care of that piece. We are praying that the FEMA piece is going to take care of all the embankment and the hydro, and we believe that's going to be the case. That leaves us outstanding with the alternate water supply. So, the way this program is laid out, the, the CDBG mitigation dollars will just do headgates only. We have applied for a ten million dollar pre-disaster mitigation grant from FEMA to assist us with the alternate water supply. We have pared down that project to be in the thirty to thirty-five million dollar range and to just go to the Broad River. So, looking, again, we're, we're seeking every bit of funding that we can, but we didn't request for all of this money to, to go to, to, to either or, so.
It's a critical part.
Yes, sir. We, we totally.
Whether to go in there.
Question. Just thinking about smaller projects and needs, which really does come under community development, what about some of the drainage areas that do flood? They all head towards?
The river.
Do we, are we considering some dollars to take care of those? The reason I ask because we recently looked, months ago, at random. And that, no feedback. And that still floods that community. How do we, how do we handle that? Are we?
Yes, sir.
Prioritizing some of those?
It's a great question. We did, as, as the group met, to, to try to prioritize the use of these dollars. We did consider storm drainage improvements, but since we've got a fairly stable funding source for storm drainage improvements, and again, sometimes there are legalities that are associated with that in terms of who owns easements, is it private versus public that, that we, we have to work through. But we did consider that, and this is the list of projects that, that came out of that. Again, primarily because, and Miss, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I, we do have a, a stormwater fee and a funding source to execute some of those projects, so.
Can I, can I get maybe a list of that and the results of the most recent discussions regarding?
We'll put something together. Yes, sir. Absolutely.
And due to the time constraints, two councilmen that Clint kind of inferred with this grant and being very, you know, having to be compliant with getting the action plan in, not wanting to run into any type of legal issues that would then pull it back.
I'm not critical or suspect.
Oh, I understand. I just.
It just seems to fall in line with what we said we were going to do.
Right.
Some projects that have been sitting out there for quite a while.
Let me ask you, let me, let me make sure I understand. Sam, are we talking about projects that's a part of this or projects beyond that?
Well, it's not.
With, with funding that's already, that's already there?
Not, not, from our perspective, not a part of it, but, but it's just.
Additional.
I'm wondering how we could take advantage of, of, you know, planning for this. And as these dollars come through, can we share some of it?
Yes, sir. Speaking to the prioritization of how did we develop the list and, and move, you know, and Ms. Wilson, really, I mean, it's a, it's a very good point of, of having a project that's essentially shovel-ready, ready to go, rather than having ten or twelve different projects that we would have to deal with compliance on. It seemed attractive to have a few larger projects, get those executed that were high priority, and then try to seek other sources of funding for the smaller. I will be glad to get you that prioritization list for our stormwater work, though. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very briefly, let me walk through just the requirements that HUD puts on this in terms of timeline. Oh, no. We have, we will have two public hearings. One of them will happen next Tuesday because they would like to see input in advance of us publishing for comment the formal, the formal action plan. Then the plan will be published. We've got to go to translation, so I believe we're going to be somewhere. And actually, if you go to the, it may be better to go to the, yeah. That's going to give you the exact timeline for how this is going. This is today. But we, the, the public hearing is, the first public hearing is Monday. We will then be sending the plan to translation. It will be officially posted on what will be a new CDBG MIT website that the city has developed that, again, is a requirement from HUD. There will be a second, the, the posting is forty-five days. There will be a second public hearing on the plan on the sixth of April. We will come back to you all for approval of the final document on the twenty-first. I believe that my requirement is to have it to you by the seventh, so you'll have plenty of time to review it. And then the last day of public comment is the thirtieth of April, and it will go to HUD. We will walk it to HUD's office on May the second. Well, since they picked the date, there better be somebody there to accept it. It was their date. Are there any other questions?
I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
So, this, the engagement schedule, the process of getting citizens out, is engagement to get feedback on these two, these two projects?
Yes.
Essentially, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. So, future funding ideas for projects, when does that engagement start? Or does that come from staff recommendations?
Well, it will also come, I believe, from what the staff hears from the public as well.
Okay.
Because that's, we will, we will be collecting all of the public comments, if you remember back from the, the prior action plans. Those become an integrated part of the final plan that goes to HUD. So, we will, the staff will be taking in, will assist, of course, with that. Public comments from, if there's some later today, certainly for the, the hearing that's going to happen on Monday, and then the, the public hearing after the plan is posted, those will all be memorialized in the action plan, which will then provide additional information for you all to perhaps make some decisions or modifications down the road in terms of how you would like to, if you want to do additional things.
Right. So, last year, you did hear from citizens that these were two priority projects that they would like to see from your community, neighbor, neighborhood meetings.
Well, the, the, the CDBG DR grant, Councilman, has really focused more on the public and individual needs after the flood. So, you know. individual needs after the flood, so, you know, rebuilds and renovations, et cetera. The staff's approach with this grant, and I'll just be frank and honest, these funds that, and the requirements that come with them from HUD are so stringent, and we are, I'll be, you know, briefing you all as well on how we're coming along with DR. But with this set of funding, and the amount of funding that it is, and what we have learned from our experiences with DR, is we need to try and cover our bases and get out of this what we can from an infrastructure perspective for the city. So, our recommendations, I mean, we certainly have to receive the public comment, receive input from our community. I think our community, there's a lot of support, as you all know, for the fire station. That's been discussed openly and publicly for many years. Our water supply is obviously a big deal for everyone, so I think people know about that. The staff's position with this grant is to use the bulk of this funding for public infrastructure projects. If we hear something overwhelmingly different through these public input opportunities, then we'll certainly come back to the table with you all. I will tell you my position, and as far as the constraints around these grants would be to move in this direction, because the requirements are quite extreme.
I'm with you. I'm with you.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Is this a one-off program for HUD, or is this going to be a continuing?
At the moment, there's no expectation that this will happen again. Now, if there's additional disasters, there may well be additional funding for mitigation, but this is it for the moment.
Now, it's based on congressional funding? Based on congressional vote?
It is. It's based on that appropriation, yes, exactly. Is there any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
That's really good news.
It is.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sue. Thank you, Gloria. Missy.
I have to figure out how to thank for that fire station.
Exactly.
He's got one more to go.
So, we will be ready to move into executive session here momentarily. One thing I'd like to do is pull up the CPD recruitment video while Skip is here now in order to save time for later. If you all don't mind, it's on the four o'clock agenda, but we can do it real quick right now.
What this is.
What this is, though, right?
Yeah, so he'll explain to you what's in front of, he will explain what they have in front of them, Skip.
Change isn't always a bad thing. The way I see it.
This is going to be a great birthday card.
So, you can go to the mic.
That's pretty cool.
Yep.
So, what we have in front of you is what you're getting ready to see here. It's a short recruitment video that we've, we've put together. What is packaged in front of you is a sample of what we're sending to colleges, universities, some areas that are kind of our recruitment hotspots, and instead of sending the traditional brochure, annual report, flyer, we still do that, and we're still using, you know, really as many innovative advertising and promotion programs we can, but this is something that is, we've received some pretty good feedback from as far as it being something new that most people haven't seen, it's kind of an attention getter, and it's something that we'll leave with criminal justice departments and stuff across the region and really throughout the southeast where we're targeting recruiting. And this is the, this is just a snap, a quick look at the video. We did not employ actors from the Actors Guild. Yours truly is, so we did it on a budget, so yours truly has a prominent role in it. So, here it is. I hope you like it.
The way I see it, law enforcement isn't just, policing is different in the 21st century. The change isn't always a bad thing. The way I see it, law enforcement isn't just about making arrests. Our job, our career is more than that. Our mission focuses on having a heart for service, serving others, caring about our citizens. We are a diverse workforce that reflects our community. Each day is different, certainly not boring. Every day, we gear up, ready for whatever situation comes our way. The Columbia Police Department is looking to grow our family. We need dedicated, compassionate, selfless-minded women to stand with us, a professional, nationally accredited capital city police department in the heart of South Carolina. Courageous, fair, honest, accountable, and transparent. Join us in answering the call to make a positive impact in someone's life. Who knows? It's pretty good, right?
Did you have a teleprompter?
You ought to get on TV every once in a while.
Did you have a teleprompter? Did you have a teleprompter? Did you have a teleprompter? Is that just like off the cuff?
It's off the cuff.
From the heart. Passion.
So, that's great. Sir?
And the Oscar.
It took more than one take, too.
Is the chief going to do this again tonight?
No, sir.
No, sir.
In that case, I have a, I was going to say something tonight.
Okay.
Councilman Brennan and I had the honor of going to the Columbia Police Awards Ceremony the other night, and all of you should look at the wrap-up that the chief sent out this week and see the awards that we're giving out. I'd say 90% of these awards were given to unsung heroes. You didn't read about it in any of the newspapers, but they were doing heroic things, and it's always been enlightening for me to see the type of people we have working in CPD. One thing that made an impression on me, and I went back to look at the wrap-up, I thought there were three incidents, but there were two incidents where ShotSpotter, a ShotSpotter Alert had sent the police to the exact spot of a shooting, and in both cases, the awards that were given out last week were given to the people that saved the life or the person that was shot. So, in addition to being a great crime stopper, the ShotSpotter also is a humanitarian thing. At least two people are now alive that would have been dead had we not had that technology and had not the police had the qualifications and the ability to know what to do to stop the bleeding, to save those people's lives. A great job, chief, and thank you for what you did.
Thank you.
Chief, I, I apologize. I missed this. I'm always there, but I agree that, you know, when you go to these neighborhood meetings too, you find the folks, they're real dedicated. What I'm, what I'm kind of liking now too is that there's a change in personnel, and I think it's not too, I think it's attrition, but I'm hearing too with those guys, they're being promoted or, you know, they're going through some sort of period of appreciation for what they do. So, I think this is good. Maybe next time too, we could put a citizen in one of the shots.
It is.
To be shot? There's a, there's a.
No.
There's some soda city folks.
One of these shots.
It was. You mean in the video?
Yeah.
There were citizens in there?
Yeah, you can watch on your little.
I didn't, you know what I mean, because, because they.
Sam, you got to pay attention to, you know, this modern technology.
They were talking to someone, they were talking to someone in their front yard, and then there was like a soda city one, yeah.
He didn't recognize that high park wasn't in it.
I want to say it was a district one resident in the front yard.
There's a Siskel and Ebert.
And then we go into executive session, Skip. So, on which platforms are we going to be able to see this? Is this going to be social media? Are we getting some PSAs? Obviously, I know we're on a channel too. It's going to be a little bit everywhere?
We're, is, is really is, it's really up to our imagination, is, you know, we're trying to take advantage of every, you know, networking, social media platform that we can.
Can you send it all to us too?
Yes, sir. And you have it, and, you know, and that's one of the reasons.
I mean, just, I mean, I see the link, but just send us all the link too, so we can just forward it out.
Are y'all on LinkedIn?
Push it out.
Yes.
Okay. Because Ryan's been doing videos on LinkedIn, and they've been getting some really good play, so.
And there is a, and there's also a link, there's a link on our website, but there's also a new link on our website that does just bring to you all's attention that we're now, you know, we talk about our gun seizures all the time, it's a pretty staggering number. I think folks have almost become immune to that, just because we throw that big number out all the time, what's it really mean? So, we've, you know, we don't, we give credit where it's credit's due. We took this from a program they started in Philadelphia, but we have a photo mat that we lay all gun seizures on now. We put the street that the seizure occurred, and they're taking a picture of it, and you can find all those, and it gives a little brief synopsis of it on our website. It's pretty staggering, but just the visual, seeing the guns that are coming off the street or, or, you know, it's pretty amazing. Mr. Duvall, thank you for making those comments. You know, those annual award ceremonies caused me to take pause every year and just, I mean, it really, you know, it's unbelievable what our staff does up against, you know, you know, what, you know, what they face every single day. You know, our staffing is, our challenges there are no secret to you all, but, you know, the fact is, we are more busy now than we've ever been in the history of the department, and we're doing it with less. And what they do that goes unnoticed is, you know, really remarkable. We tend to focus on the things we don't always get right because that's, you know, that's what we need to fix, but there's so many things that we do just at a remarkable level and so heroic and courageous every day, and really, that's, that's the takeaway from those awards is, is it's people that just, you know, bring their A-game every single day and put it on the line. But, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Skip. All right, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
It's you.
Go for it.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. We go into executive session for receipt of legal advice related to matters covered by attorney-client privilege pursuant to 30-4-78-2 Convention Center Municipal Boundary Adjustment Senior Resources Board Memberships, Discussion of Negotiation Inance to Proposed Contractual Arrangement Pursuant to 30-4-78-2 Municipal Complex, Discussion of Negotiation Inance to Proposed Purchase of Property Pursuant to 30-4-78-2 Calhoun Street, Discussion of the Employment of an Employee Pursuant to 4-78-1 Chief Administrative Judge.
Second.
Moving to second, any discussion? Any none? Move to previous question. Kurt, call her out.
Yes.
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 Aye.
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 Aye.